All right, I'd like to call the order, call to order the Village of Marvin Parks Recreation and Greenway Board Meeting here on November 3rd at 9:04. I do see that we have myself, Bob Nundenkamp, Sheri Albano, Dan Wilson, and Christina Culp as board members, and our council liaison, Kim Vanderburg. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I do have one change I'd like to discuss, which is Derek's gonna be a little bit late, so he asked that I do two things, which would be reverse new business to come before unfinished business, and under unfinished business to add the tree lighting as item number four.
So unfinished for new business, unfinished add tree lighting?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Any discussion on that, or any other changes anybody would like to request?
And you can just, your motion can just be as amended, you don't have to list them all again?
Okay, well, yeah. Do I have a motion on the table then to swap unfinished business and new business and add item number four to unfinished business, which would be the tree lighting? So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. So that allows us to move on to the adoption of the minutes from October 6th. And Austin, in case you hadn't seen it, had sent out the initial minutes. He had a couple of corrections he had to make, so he resent them back out again. So I hope everybody's had a chance to kind of look through them. Any questions, additions, edits to the minutes as they exist, from anyone? All right, do I hear a motion on the table to adopt the October 6th, 2020 minutes as they are written?
So moved.
All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right.
Oh, and you really should get a second on that. Sheri, you don't need a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
All right. The next item on the agenda is public comment, and I don't see any public comment on the sheet here, but I do see a couple of folks that might maybe on the line. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment online? Okay, and if there is no comment, we will move on to the public facility, well, I guess there's nothing there, public facilities manager update. So we'll move on to new business items. And the first item for discussion is discussion of new member orientation, and Kim, I think you were gonna speak to that?
Yes, thank you. So, and I kinda wanted to talk to you guys about it before I talk to council about it, and I just wanted to get your, just kind of your thoughts and your feelings on it. As we have gotten new members on this board, on planning board, we've created new boards, would it be helpful for new members to go through some sort of like orientation, like trying to, instead of like trying to get up to speak in a meeting, to kind of like sit with staff like for like an hour or so, just to kind of go over like what's going on, what are the hot topics, what kind of, how meetings work, things like that? Would that be helpful for you guys?
Kim, really, really fast, I just wanted to say that we've been trying, we've been meaning to do that, but we've just been behind because of COVID, trying to get people together. We've already started, we already got planning board member orientation scheduled, and we're hoping, and we've already done the board of adjustments and the new committee, so we're hoping to get some, get some orientation for the PRG members scheduled soon.
Okay, and I mean, that's good, but I'm just like thinking, like before you even get into like your first meeting, so that you're not trying to play catch-up, because there's so much information, I feel like we kind of like throw everything on like our new board members, and we're like, okay, figure it out, so, and I know how I was when I started, so I just wanna know if that's something that like you guys interested in doing, kind of as we move forward?
So before I came to my first meeting, Mary Sykes sort of treated me to the fire hose version of that, with a stack, I mean, literally a stack of everything she had never done with the group. So I, I'm sure that I didn't get it all, and I got maybe 10% of it, but still, I knew some of the phrases and words, it was, it was very helpful.
Okay, good, okay.
She did do it, but she did really good at it, you know, for us particularly.
Okay, that's good feedback. And Austin, I'm glad to know that you guys are working on that and talking, kind of talking that through, because I do think it'll be helpful, because again, I wanna, I wanna retain people on our boards, because if it gets very important, and you guys are an integral part in the village and, and getting things accomplished, but I just wanna make sure we're not just like giving you so much information, and you're like, oh, it's way too much, so, if you guys, and so that, that helps me, that was really all I wanted to, I just kinda wanted to get a...
Yeah, Kimberly, I agree, and also one point that you did bring up as part of it is, you know, I, I think a lot of people that, you know, come to this board, and some of the others, maybe their first time in government whatsoever, so to even make a small component of that, some of the administrative pieces of it, you know, talking about making sure you're not communicating via emails, that would constitute a quorum.
Yeah.
Different things like that, just so that they understand why sometimes we have to communicate the way we do, you know, via email, and, and some of those things like that, understanding what quorum means in terms of the decisions that we can make, you know, depending on whether people can, you know, even attend a meeting or not, and stuff like that, it's just, it's, it's good for people that haven't been in the government at all before to kind of get some of those pieces.
Okay, good. Hey, Austin, can we add that to our meeting for next week then, so we can kind of talk about it?
For the council meeting, we'll talk about more orientations?
Yeah.
Yeah, and especially since we have two new people now.
What John just said, just the basics of, you know, how we all learned, how Bob and I learned how to say so moved, so we could get on with, you know, that whole thing. But also, especially since you've added more boards, maybe where whatever their job is fits in with the larger scheme, and that, maybe we all need to hear that, right? So that would help too, just the bigger picture of where we're going, and as a village and the structure.
Okay, so I'll have, I'll bring that up at our, at our board meeting next week, and then we'll start working with staff to put something together, hopefully, you know, like the beginning of the year or something.
Yeah, and, and I don't have it with me today, but you often see me bringing that big giant binder with all the stuff I keep information in, but, but I would think also, to the extent that we could do something that might have our Parks and Greenway Master Plan and a three-way binder for, you know, especially the new people as they come in, some of the key documents, you know, that, that are important to this board, that might be a part of that, so to actually have something physical that allows them to do a little bit of research, you know, studying on, on kind of the constitution of the board, and things of that nature, I think would be helpful along with that.
Austin, Austin, it's kind of like what we have for ours, it has like rules and procedure for meetings.
Procedure manual, yeah.
That kind of stuff.
That's what we, that's what we just did with the board of adjustments, we gave, we gave them their rules of procedure, we walked into how meetings work, we did the same with the new committee, and we're, we're trying, we're gonna meet up with the two recent planning board members on Monday, so that, it's in the process.
But yeah, we're supportive of that, Kim.
Awesome, thank you guys very much, I appreciate that feedback, and I'll, we'll get working on it with staff.
All right, that's item number one in new business. Item number two is discussion of Marvin Gardens Pocket Park. And as we start that, I guess Rohit will be speaking to that, but interestingly, I made my first stop at Publix yesterday, and I was kind of driving out over there, and I see the parking lot that they created there, but still trying to kind of visualize exactly how, how things come together, so it's exciting to kind of see that, that piece finally come together, and the store's open there, and interested to see what we do with the park here, from, from here. Rohit?
I don't think Rohit's here.
He's on here.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, great. Hi, so the, the situation with Park, Pocket Parks are pretty much the same, council's going to put on a resolution to accept the dedication of the Pocket Park at the next meeting, and after that, we'll still have to do some work on the backend to actually make it ours, but basically, so the 1.05 acres does include some part of the sidewalk and the hill up to landscape row, and on the other side, it includes the parking lot and the trails, so the workable area for the actual park is kind of closer to, I don't imagine it, but it's closer to like half or two yards an acre. In any case, that would be a pretty good, you know, dog park, or playground, or something like that, where, you know, people from what, from what they can chase could walk to, or people from shopping at Publix could, you know, come hang out. But I think the matter is that we do need to do something related to the lighting as well, because currently, the parking lot is kind of in an alcove of mature trees, and many people are already complaining that people are kind of loitering around there. So whatever we do should also incorporate some lighting. And I think that's all the really updates and info that I have about it, I think this item was really more so for you guys to brainstorm what you'd like to do in that place than a project.
And Rohit, just to review, they're turning it over now to us, anything that we do as far as improvements at this point is really from an expense standpoint on us, they've already done everything they're required to, correct?
Yes, yes, so they've done the parking lot and the trail, and they finished it and unchecked that, you know, they put it towards, they put it towards edge of the property line, so the wedding can chase and tie into it if they want it later, and they teed it up, so that there's like a continued walking path from one side into the other side, where it connects with the sidewalk on that driveway. And yeah, so they were never going to do anything with that internal property, except for just leave it just as is, so that we would eventually develop it into something.
I'd like to see this way, to certify wildlife habitat, and tie it in, tie it into Marsh and ERG, and help promote that. The community's really, really supporting us, and we'd love that to become public up at Marvin Garden.
Yeah, so that makes a good point, is that, so once, you know, certainly we have the park, you know, so once they do turn it over, what would be that process to kind of, it's really us just going through the application process?
Putting the necessary elements.
For the village.
Right.
Yeah, and, you know, it might be a good place to even put a box of information, you know, and, and once again, you know, I, I'm not sure how we'll end up developing it fully, but, you know, seeing it as kind of a nice area at a minimum for some picnic tables, if people get their food, or some sandwiches there at Publix, and can sit there, and, you know, have, have some information available, kind of in one of those wooden boxes that people could get info about Marsh, and, and even Marvin Effer Park, you know, if they're not familiar with that, so that's a good idea. Christina?
Yeah, so I mean, what I, what I say develop, you know, I mean, you know, we can leave as much natural as we choose to, and you can also walk around there today and kind of scope out like how much area there is.
Yeah.
There's some kind of pathways of not have like top trees, and so that you could just like kind of walk around, so.
Can, can you send out to us, if we do want to take some time to kind of walk that ourselves, just a, kind of a, you know, a picture of the survey, just so we kind, as we do that, we can kind of see, or is it, or is it that evident, you know?
Christina, can you hear us? No.
You might have lost her.
Well, what I was thinking, John, is look, Christina's now the president of Marsh, but just take, at least allow us the opportunity to look at it, and come back to the PRG with a potential plan for the certification process, and I know Christina loves native plants, there may be something we can do with that to make it really a pretty nice place.
Sure.
If that's okay.
Yeah, we can work to put something like that on for the next agenda, if she wants to speak on behalf of Marsh, after they might, between now and the next meeting.
Just tell me exactly what you want to be on the agenda, and I'll put it on there.
Okay, we'll do it.
What are the steps for getting to a plan for that? Do we, I apologize, I'm so new, do we kind of help scope something out, and then get an engineer to design it, and then we take it to the council, or we take it to the council after we scope it out, or who's kind of, what's the process for getting basic plan for how that would be developed in stages and ultimately?
I think part of it is a combination of us working with staff to come up with that plan, and if we're gonna involve Marsh as well, probably better to, to let staff, I don't know, you know, if necessarily it might involve or might not engaging something with planning board sometimes, so there, there's times like we might have to include either Marsh and/or other boards like Planning Board, but I think as a, an advisory board, council will typically look to us to kind of come up with that plan, working with staff, get those ideas. Kim will be having interactions with them, with council to kind of note the progress, and, you know, at the point that we actually need to engage in either engineering, construction, or even if not, maybe it's just directing staff, you know, council kind of approve those plans once they get put together. Would that be correct, Rohit, or Austin?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. How much council gets involved really depends on them, but you pretty much made all the points here, since you're the advisory board for Parks and Greenways, you basically are in charge of, you know, what you want to suggest to put in the park, and where you put it, and that council will approve it, pretty much that, they'll provide the recommendations.
What kind of schedule do the folks envision that being on, so I heard things like, you know, get some benches out there, kind of get things going right away that are simple to do, maybe some cuts and trails that are already there, or something like that, but what kind of schedule do you envision that typically follows or moves?
There's really no typically, because we've only our second park, right? We'll try to do it as soon as we can, though, because, probably because of just the lighting issue alone.
Well, and that's what I was gonna say, I think the lighting situation has got to be addressed sooner than later, as we, again, as Rohit said, we've already been getting complaints about it being super dark, people hanging out there, so I think probably lighting will be the first thing that we need to kind of look at, address, and, Rohit, does planning board help to approve that too?
I don't think they do, they're required to perform a planning and zoning issue as well.
I, I wouldn't, like I said, I think if, I think if staff can get us out, maybe just a kind of survey of what our piece of that is individually before our next meeting, if we can each get a chance to do that, we, you know, while we want to move forward with the lighting quickly, we want to be careful to make sure that we understand that we have some sort of vision for what we want to do, because we don't want to just throw some lighting in there, or what seems obvious now, that, that might, you know, create more, or, you know, expense, or, or, you know, if we consider what we might want to do before we have those conversations about the, the lighting, and at least understand. Is it more your concern, Kim, about the lighting specifically for where the parking is initially?
Yeah, because I mean, I don't think people are utilizing that undeveloped area, I think they're sitting in their park parking and doing things that they should not be doing.
Yeah, gotcha.
So it may be a matter that before we put up an eating permit, we have to rent another for those lights and rather than that parking lot, I don't know, but that's what I'm saying, like we've got to figure something out, because, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's a safety, public health situation.
What was the more intense thing?
I know I had reached out to Union Power Cooperative about adding additional lights to our community, and when I spoke to them, you know, they had a crisis for the different types of lights, and the breakdown, I think he said there was like a two, about a two month turnover, I don't, I'm assuming that's who we would have install the lights, right? Union Power?
I think it depends, if it's close enough to where their power already is, then oftentimes that makes sense, because they have a pretty economical program where you can add a streetlight, and then you just pay the, the, you know, like a per month fee, but, but if it's, if it's kind of off and further away, depending on how far from where they currently have the electric, sometimes then it makes more sense to go with a private contractor to trench a line in and put a light up.
Yeah, I mean, I spoke to the engineer in January of last year, just like to give you guys crazy numbers, because I did it for us, so those standard old fashioned lampposts, the, the old ones, those are 850 a post, though, most of what you see laying around in older communities are that high pressure sodium, they would put the same lamppost, but it would be an LED equivalent, and I think he said the operational fee is about $18 a month, to cost to light it, but the, the tricky part was trenching, so he said just for that standard lights, 850, but he couldn't give us a price for trenching, depending on where the power source is.
Yeah.
Now, those acorns, which are the more contemporary, they look nicer, they're like broad eyeing, those are up around 1,200 to 1,500 dollars a lamppost plus trenching. So just, just to throw that out, only because I met with the engineers and I had some information, just so, you know, you kind of know, or, yeah, you can go with a private electrician.
Yeah, John, just a question, I want to follow up with Dan's point, what is going to be the process moving forward? Are we going to create a subcommittee, go out and look at the Pocket Park, make recommendations to PRG, and then to the council, or how would that look to move forward with this?
That's up for y'all, that's for up for y'all to decide, but you're not that large of a board, so you guys might could do that yourself.
Yeah, I, I think if, I think if, as individuals, we get a chance to go visit it by next meeting, I think at the next meeting, when we have it on the agenda, we can kind of pull some of the ideas that we have, just from kind of seeing it, if at that point we feel we have enough to start making recommendations to staff to go out and, and take a look at, you know, what the, what the cost would be for Union Power, or someone to do that, that's, that's great.
Did you say you wanted to send a survey or something? I forgot, I missed that.
No, when, when I said a survey, I meant just something showing the actual parcel that's being dedicated over, and how that kind of sits versus the, the current, yeah, plat, plat, plat map.
I would recommend...
I think lighting is really key for, you know, open spaces like that, because it can become a liability, or it can become, you know, something wonderful, even in the evening, you know, summer hours and stuff like that, it could, if it's not lit properly and people are there, then we could really run into safety issues, so I think that's something we have to really, you know, think hard about before we tap into that.
Yeah, and, you know, the, one of the other things to consider is that, as I mentioned before, you know, once you put something there for the parking lot, then there's also the consideration of we do it with the intent that there might be some, some other electric need somewhere else there, you know, and, you know, part of that is the difference, I think if Union County typically does it, there's no meter required, right? But if we were to then have, kind of do our own thing off that, I think they would probably then have to put a separate meter on it, you know, and then we would have to pull off that meter, it would be a separate thing.
John, is that a developer responsibility or a Marvin responsibility?
Well, I, I think anything, once this piece is dedicated over, and it hasn't already been negotiated with the developer, is really on us.
The only reason I'm asking, because to Sheri's point, such a safety issue, as the developer and with the rentals and leasing buildings, I just wonder if they would share cost, or if it's kind of a hundred percent of us.
I mean, I, I think it's a fair question about asking the developer if they would share costs, I mean, I mean, the easiest thing, if we can tie into their meters, and they pay the operational cost, and we pay for the, let's say, the installation, it's easier, they tie right in, it's all tied in, I don't know if they run emergency generators when the power is out, and these are things that we consider as, you know, negotiating with that.
Yeah, well, and again, like you said, with the trenching, it probably has a big impact, they're already built out now, essentially, you know, so if we're starting to talk about tying into any of their meters, trying to get to those under all brand-new pavement and everything, might be a lot different conversation than bringing something from the pole directly, but, yeah.
I'll take a look today, I mean, it's right outside our entry.
Yeah.
I just see no harm with asking that question.
Sure. All right, so as far as this, I, I guess, you know, the takeaway is, we'll all try to get a chance to, to go visit the new, new area over there, if staff in the next day or so could get us that plat map out, to, to give us a good understanding when we're there, to kind of look at it, and we'll have it on the agenda for next month.
I would just say, as far as like lights and stuff, I think that, that's gonna go in regardless, but then if you start talking about like, well, wildlife preserve versus a dog park versus a fitness park, get a direction from council before you ask staff to spend time and effort, you know, researching stuff, you know.
I'd put together a list of ideas of what you, different proposals for the park, and give those recommendations to council, and let them, let them kind of parse their way, make their way through those proposals, and see what they, see what they like, that way you're not, you're not going just one, one idea that council might not like, and staff's a lot of hours in.
Yeah, that makes sense.
What did he say?
Essentially that when we come back next month, kind of have it on the agenda, that we kind of take those ideas with the intent that, from that mix of ideas, a couple of different options, Kimberly can go back to council, or if I'm able to be at their next meeting, get some feedback from them before we start directly tasking staff with kind of going down rabbit holes, just to make sure that some of the ideas that we would have, or what we're looking to do there, is in concert with what, you know, the vision is that, that council might have, or some of their ideas.
Okay, so by next meeting, we're, we're gonna take a look at that land lot, we're gonna look at lighting, but we're also gonna try to work on ideas, what we think we can do with it, and then present it?
Yeah, and then have that shared with council for some feedback, that way we're kind of getting a couple of steps in, rather than doing it next, and then having to wait a month before the next one, and, yeah, well, if we're prepared to do that, it'll kind of help move it along, I think.
Yeah, and there's some stuff we're gonna do regardless, right, lighting, landscaping, fencing, you know, but just don't ask staff to do too much, that just might be rejected. Get some blessing from council on a direction first, before we, like John said, start going down a rabbit hole, just to, you know, have it denied.
Yeah, so, so the lighting probably is the one thing now at this point that staff could probably start looking into, because we're gonna know, we're, we know we're gonna need that one way or the other, but we'll, we'll have a better idea of that after we each get to kind of take a look at it over the next month.
Hey, Kim, has council, has council had a discussion about what they're thinking, or?
Well, we talked, we talked about it in our work session, and we really kind of wanted to see what this board wanted, what their ideas were to come back with, you know, we're, we're really open, but we just wanted to see what your guys and staff were for, we just know this is what we want to do, and we want to take recommendations from you guys. from you guys.
And I think one of the things that we do want to do is, you know, a, a, as we've looked at, whether it's trails, pocket parks, anything, we, we want to keep an understanding of how maintainable it is because, you know, we've got that responsibility and cost after the fact. So, um, you know, we just want to make sure that we, we don't start going down too many roads that for what it is, which is a nice little spot, that, that we don't get too deep into how we created to have to maintain it, you know, um, to, to too much of a, a degree because it's separate from the park. It would require, you know, people to go over how we're going to handle any sort of landscaping or maintenance, those type of costs that, that go into it as well. Um, you know, th- those will all be considerations. All right. Any further discussion then on the Marvin Gardens Pocket Park? All right. Moving on to item number three under new business items is discussion of Ace Place. And Derek, that's you.
Did y'all get a flyer in your packet with the Ace Place kind of PDF? This is something that came across my plate recently. Um, I tried to kind of put it on the back burner, but it just kept popping up. Um, so I, I've actually met with a rep from Innova on this and he thinks that Marvin Effer Park would be the perfect location. Uh, now obviously any sales rep is going to say that. Um, but I, I kind of had, um, some other people out there with me to, um, to dialogue with. And I'm not a disc golf fan by any means, um, but something like this really excites me. I view this as passive recreation. Um, this is, what this is, is a nine-hole short course. Um, these are, this Ace Place is designed for families, for small kids, for short game. Um, it's designed to be on two to three acres. As you know, we have twenty-six acres at the park. And I see this, um, being in the back of the park, going through the woods, maybe crossing the trail, um, coming out near the picnic shelter for a little bit of visibility and publicity. Um, but to put one of these packages in with their custom design, all the, you know, all the materials, everything minus installation is, is eighty-five hundred dollars. Um, we could sell T-sign sponsors and, you know, potentially pay for it, or we could, you know, request it in next year's budget. Um, but I, I look at this as a way to expand the use of the park as far as the, you know, the grounds. This is something that's kind of been a vision of mine. We have the barn and the barn and the playground area gets a lot of use. And then you have the trail, but then there's just a lot of unused space. And so I've wanted to kind of, uh, increase, you know, the use of other space in the park and, um.
Especially around the perimeter, like where the corral used to be.
Yeah, the fields, yeah, the old corral, the field, the perimeter, the woods. Um, you know, this is a way to kind of clean them out, clean them up, uh, make some of the wooded area safe to traverse and give families a, another, um, option of, of stuff to do at the park, you know? It goes right along with our ordinances. There's no, no games, no whistles, no coaches, no practices. It's just, um, it's an activity that you can come out, um, and, and do pretty much at any age because it's, it's such a, a basic, simple level. Um, I've already gotten some feedback from some people that saw the agenda and they're like, man, that would be really cool for Marvin. It would, this is the perfect setting for it. So just wanted to get you guys' thoughts on it. Um, and yeah, that's it.
Pretty cool stuff. We have a course near my parents' house, um, at our local park and it's, it's fantastic.
Yeah, and I think, you know, even versus some of the things that you see in the cost of playgrounds, that cost doesn't jump out in the, like some of the other ones do, you know? So, um, and I, you know, I know especially you, you go to a lot of the larger parks these days, they're all installing them and they're, they're, they're used, you know, really pretty well. Now, one interesting thing though, you mentioned, you know, I've typically seen them more in, in open areas or along open areas. You mentioned kind of being able to do it within the trails. Is that kind of something that came from them? Because.
It, it sort of came from them. I told them absolutely I did not ever want to see a frisbee put anybody who was on the trail, you know, in danger.
Yeah.
Right? So there would be optimal screening. Um, it, maybe you cross the trail at one point between holes.
Not in a sound.
But you, but you're cutting out, you know, smaller trees to kind of make your whole area. You might utilize a little bit of the field next to the community gardens, um, as a spot for a basket or, you know, come out of the woods into the area below the picnic shelter for a basket. But, you know, there's just, within the trail, there's a huge border of woods on both sides. And so there's, there's areas to cut holes, um, and, and still have screening.
It would be just a little bit more clearing off some of the parts of the trail to open it up a little bit.
Not the trail, clearing the woods adjacent to the trail. Yeah. And these are, these holes we're talking about, they're small. They're like, he said the smallest one is like sixty feet, you know? And the biggest one is like a hundred and fifteen feet. So these are not par fours and par fives.
Big scout, let me see the big.
No, this is like one throw gets it to the basket and then you got two putts, you know, to get it in. So it's, it's, it's very compact. It's family-friendly. Um, and, you know, you can read about it. You get a, you get a nice little deal with the package. They, they promote it. Um, I think it was, I think it would just get more families out to the park using it at, at different times, um, not just, you know, going to the playground.
Have folks been to the Elon Park one?
I've been by it. I've never played it.
You want to see, see one is really close. The Elon one is there. I think it's a, uh, pretty cool.
It is super busy.
Between five twenty-one and lines.
Yeah. You definitely get a lot, a lot, a lot of traffic, I'm sure. Just good.
Sports connection.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Yeah.
All right. And any additional comment?
I, I was just going to say, I love the idea because it's not just for little kids, right? It's any age can pretty much do this.
Yeah, it's one of those things that families.
I thought it took weeks a little bit and kind of connect the park spaces in a way, you know? And it doesn't have to just be in the open areas. I think it's really cool.
Kind of like sporting class.
Yeah.
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 What you're describing.
It's not a lot, it's not a big investment. It's not a lot of money, um, to invest. So.
Now, typically do people bring their own frisbees or discs or, okay, so it's not something like you guys?
No, there's no programming. We're not renting discs or handing them out. It's just, you know, it's like you said, just like.
I do envision dogs chasing the frisbees.
There's not that many dogs out there. There's a few on the trails at times, but.
But there might be.
We leave that to the, uh, dog training classes.
That'll be a handicap.
Yeah, Kim looks like she's got something.
If, and if everybody likes this idea, which I like this idea, Derek, I would just kind of put together some numbers in terms of, because I know it says that installation's not included. So I don't know if you and your park staff would be able to install it, but kind of take a look at like where you think that it might go and what the cost of kind of clearing those areas out might be. And then if you have an idea of doing like T-sponsors, like, like how would that work? And then bring that for the meeting.
That could be a perfect Eagle Scout project.
The installation? Yeah, I, yeah.
Uh, because it's just cement mostly and?
Well, I did, I did pitch it to one Eagle Scout, um, as you go raise the T-sign sponsors and I've gotten crickets back from that. Um, the installation sounds very simple. It's just a sleeve that goes in the ground. We concreted in and then dropped the, you know, the post on the basket and with a locking pin. Um, what was it going to say? Oh, so part of the package price is they come and design it. He said he'll spend.
Let it out.
Four, five, six days just walking the grounds, studying it, you know, measuring, doing this. I mean, he's, he's already come out, you know, and walked it and he's like, oh yeah, you know, this is great. But, you know, when you, when you kind of sign on, then you, then you get, you know, their experts. This guy's, you know, been with the company for twenty-four years. Um, he designed the prototype Ace Place course down in Rock Hill. Um, so it's not so much me saying where it would be a good spot because I don't have a clue. My good spot is Marvin Effer Park. You know, they'll come and, you know, and draw holes one through nine and tell us exactly where to put them. You know, you've got screening on this side, screening on this side, good connectivity. Um, so it's a, it's a really neat package. You pay for their expertise and, you know, and the equipment. So.
Okay. All right, cool. Well, whatever additional cost you think that there might be, plus what we can do for the T-sponsors, um, just bring that back to council.
Okay.
Talk about it next week. I think it's a great idea though.
Absolutely. Thanks, guys.
All right. So that finishes up new business. Now we'll move to, um.
Unfinished.
What's that?
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business. Yeah. Uh, the first item is discussion of park fees and I know we kind of started that discussion a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago. Derek?
Yeah. I apologize. I see my name beside this, but was I supposed to lead this discussion or get something for you on this?
I don't know. I think it was really just a follow-up. I, I think we had that initial conversation at Christina's request. Um, you know, and I don't know if it was something that was brought up to council because really it, it's, we might have lost some folks.
Oh, gosh.
Did we lose everybody or are you still there?
We're here.
So are we?
Okay, we just lost video on all of you.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Um, but, but I guess, you know, we, we kind of had that conversation and it's a conversation that's kind of ebbed and flowed o- o- over the years with, you know, specifically, you know, whether we charge for the daily parking passes and, and whether it's really a public park or a Village of Marvin park.
I, I thought y'all, I thought you all.
I think the conversation, the conversation last time was in the requested, Derek was, and I think he's walked over, there he is, was how much money are we quote making on these park fees?
Oh, yeah.
Are we really, are we really getting significant dollars out of the charging the park fees and is it worth quite heavily the hassle?
I'm having Nancy and Julie grab those numbers for me real quick. So I was, um, while they're getting those, I would just say from park staff standpoint, the biggest benefit in them is the, I think I mentioned, um, is just using it as a deterrent or, you know, the ability to re- excuse somebody from being at the park who was only there looking for, you know, a spot to get in trouble pretty much.
Yeah, but we can still say if you're doing something illegal, you got to go. I mean, or something sort of illegal, you got to go.
Yeah, but, yeah, but this, this gives us the ability to do, to, you know, ask them to leave even prior to that. Just knowing what they're there for.
Yeah, I, I, I think Christina, the difference here is that it makes it much more subjective. You know, i- if, if we, i- if everybody has a right to be there, it makes it more subjective and places more pressure on the staff to, if they see something suspicious where if, you know, it, it kind of gives them a reason to go say, hey, you know, are you guys familiar? We have a pass and, and if that's the case, whether they have it or not. Um, I don't know how often that really comes up. I- is it a regular recurrence that we're kind of?
No, it, it varies. I mean, it just depends on, you know, the temperature, the, you know, the day of the week, if, if school's out early, um, various factors. I will also say, I'm not, I'm not for it or against it either way. Um, I have heard council members in the past, um, remind me that I think the original, one of the original intents was to control the volume in the park because we have limited parking as well.
I think, I think, I know we talked about it last time and we kind of were like up in the air because I, I think we're for the same reasons we still are up in the air. Is it really a problem? What if we just kind of left it be until it becomes a problem? I mean, because there are a lot of administrative issues that come involved in collecting the fees, right? So until it becomes a problem, maybe why not even put it on the agenda? Then it becomes a problem or having unauthorized use, then we can pass something pretty quickly.
Yeah, I agree.
Right now, why expend all this energy and effort and finances to collect money to limit something if it's not a problem?
And Sherri, I understand directionally where you're going and I agree with where you're going. I would just like to see the numbers.
The other thing.
To see what we're walking away from, if anything.
While we're looking at getting the numbers together, if we do, the disc golf thing is, sounds like a really cool idea. Really appreciate coming up with that. That's such a good use of, I think it's passive. It's a great use of the space. But you, you know, if you have to get a pass to use that, so I just went on, my friend, um, is pretty into that and he has this whole app on his phone where you can find courses. And so you get registered and it's very easy to register your course. And then people kind of show up when they are traveling, um, to check out your course and things like that. But, um, you know, that starts to go against the, or becomes difficult if, it's kind of like the mail, the letterbox thing. If you're trying to use the, use the park for things that are going to encourage people coming from outside of the area, we will encourage that. Then we have a kind of diverging agendas.
Yeah, Kim, I, I, I don't know. Have you had any chance to, to kind of get a bellwether of council? Because in the end, you know, a change like that goes through you folks. Um, you know, in the past, council people have had very, you know, um, strong opinions one way or, or the other about public park, Marvin Park. Um, do you know if the, with the new council makeup, where things kind of stand with that or?
No, I, I honestly, I haven't brought that up yet. Um, I didn't have any numbers to talk about with them. Um, so it was kind of a way to see what you guys, you know, thought about it, how much money we're actually making, how much of a pain it really is to enforce. Um, I don't have a, I really don't have a thought. So either of the two sheets.
The two sheets I just handed to Bob, um, those are all the parking passes. Those include, um.
Professional fees.
Professional, um, and then the non-resident dailies and the non-resident annual. So that's a, yeah, five dollar for a daily pass, um, fifty dollars for an annual pass and then professionals, twenty-dollar daily, hundred-dollar annual. So everything, um, we're basically eighteen, nineteen was about a little over five thousand dollars. Nineteen, twenty was a little over five thousand dollars. And then so far, we're at seven sixty-five, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars through this year, July first. And then so far, we're at $765, $765 through this year, July 1st.
So if it, if it stays, if it stays on track, then that always pays for your disc ball. I mean, it's a significant amount of money.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, but how much of that is professional fees versus resident?
Yeah.
What else to call them, uh, fees?
Yeah, I, I probably.
Because the professional fees for photographers and stuff, I, I think that makes perfect sense to keep that going. They're making money off of the park.
Yeah, I do need, I, I do need to give you, I do need to break it down.
Yeah, it looks like it might be about like 20% or like just daily fees or something, just kind of glancing at it, you know? Cause there, there's daily passes that you see that are on here. And then you see like some residents may have bought annual passes. But I, I, I would say the preponderance of them are, you know, larger fees that are done by the professional folks and the soccer hot shots and, and some of those. So, you know, maybe 20% of those.
Keep those.
So maybe 20% of them are, are actual daily fees and annual passes. And, and if that's the case, that might be about a thousand dollars worth or something like that.
So is there a way to get that in an Excel spreadsheet or?
Sure, yeah. It is in Excel.
It already is, Christina.
Yeah, it's in Excel. We just need to kind of break them down.
Yeah, I may or may not be able to get the breakdown today. I apologize. It may, it may take a little bit of time to split it up.
Yeah. So if.
But that kind of feels about right, that it's about 20% of the residents, if you will, I don't, whatever you want to call it.
Or non-residents, yeah.
Regular people. Yeah. And, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we stop the professional fees. I think that makes perfect sense and I don't think anybody minds paying that.
I will say, in my almost four years of being out there, 97% of the traffic that comes in there is, are the people that we want. Very rarely is it crowded or overcrowded. The, you know, the biggest issues we have are with the photographer, the number of photographers on the weekends in the fall and parking for large events. Those are our, those are our two biggest issues.
And don't you think the parking situation sort of self-selects, right? If I drove over there, it's never happened, but if I drove over there and every parking spot was full, I'm going to go somewhere else.
Yes. Yeah, if you're looking.
Not point, we don't want to be on top of each other.
Why don't we add this to the agenda for our next meeting? Derek would be accountable for the breakout.
Yeah.
I would like a suggestion.
Okay. No, we can't, we wouldn't have to do it.
Yeah, I, I, I think what Bob was just saying is. If we, um, you know, there, there's no critical thing having us have to make a decision on this right now. You know, we've kind of brought it up in conjunction with some of these other things. We'll have, we'll give Derek the time before the next meeting to kind of break those numbers out.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do it manually. She said there's not a way in the system, so.
Yeah, I thi- it seems like you can pretty easily do that because even though they're cut off in the memo area, it seems to give a pretty good description of, of what type of, uh, and, and you can kind of go by the fee a little bit as well. So what are these codes? Are, are those accounting codes?
I'll have to ask Nancy.
Cause it might be the accounting codes we kind of go by too.
This is out of my field here.
But, um, yeah, I, I think if we just continue to kind of move along with the conversation here, just studying it to have a better understanding. And then at that point, Kim could do a temperature check, you know, amongst council before we get any deeper than that, once we, we kind of have some facts to give her to share. And, and then move forward from there. Because again, it doesn't do a whole lot of good for us to continue to have conversations about it, you know, until we get a couple of the facts and get kind of a temperature check from council.
John has more than happy to do that. Austin, if under Park, Truck and Greenway Board for the meeting, for the agenda, if you can just put something about park fees to help me remember that and I'll talk about it next week.
Where are on the agenda?
Park, Truck and Greenway Board update.
Okay, so, so park fees on there, okay.
Yep, thank you.
Just two quick things on the money side. I do think, um, I don't, I won't recharge anymore. I looked it up at one point in time, but we rented a barn for a birthday party. It was very reasonable, a couple years ago. But if we need to make up that revenue, uh, I think we could slightly increase some of the other fees, the professional fees, cause I, I don't think they're unreasonable at all right now. I think they're probably quite favorable, but.
We did just make the whole, the, and added the, you can't stop her.
The other thing is, I do think if you, if we, so the reason I, I didn't like the, um, when we first moved here, the reason I didn't like the, the fees, the registration thing is because it just was extremely unwelcoming. And I think we had to, you know, kind of figure out how to use the park. And, you know, you kind of, if you're like the, the rule followers like we, we're trying to be the, trying to not do the wrong thing and it's kind of difficult to figure out, well, I gotta show up for town during work hours to get me a sticker. You know, that's not so easy for everybody. And it's not a big deal, but it is, it is unwelcoming, I think. So I think.
And it's a little annoying, it's, yeah.
We were, we were very annoyed that we had to do it.
There you go. And I do appreciate what you're saying, that it's, it's not welcoming and that's what we're trying to be.
Yeah, so, um, that's just a, that's just a general statement. I do, do really see the, the value of being able to use that as a tool though for the security type things. It is, it keeps you from having to make, you know, selections and how you, you know, people, they are not to do the right thing. In terms of money thing, I do think we would, if we would have easily donated money, probably half the times we show up, we'll put a couple dollars in the bin if there was a, a request for donations. I do think we would have planned that we'd give more money that way than a thousand dollars. If we just, um, put up a sign requesting donations as folks use the park.
I have a question. I know we, we charge professional fees for people to use our park, like you said, um, to come and run programs. But did we ever consider running like village, quote, rope sanction programs? I know, um, there is a town, you know, where, where I live, back east, that was, let's say, for example, they were, um, on the coast and had beach access. So the town actually brought in a company that would have kayak lessons and they would run, and you paid through the town and it was a private company that came in. Would we ever think of doing some things like that to generate revenue and also bring more, um, attention to the Village of Marvin? Maybe this would be a way to draw in more communities to be annexed into Marvin? Like, oh wow, look at these great programs that Marvin runs, whether it's.
Sherri, I think it's a great idea. We just don't, we do not have the staff resources to do that. We are stretched thin as it is. Um, we absolutely, we just don't have the staff resources. Maybe as we start annexing in some of these neighborhoods that we want to and we start getting some additional traction, maybe we could hire somebody to do something like that. I think it's a great idea. And I think if you have specific ideas about like what types of programs we could offer, I absolutely say let's, let's, you know, put that on the agenda, we'll talk about it. But in terms of being able to move some of those programs forward right now, we're just, we're so thin for staff line. We wouldn't have anybody to run it.
I mean, I just thought was if it was a win-win, we can generate revenue for the village. And also I think even more important part is it becomes like a community thing. Oh wow, look, Marvin's got a, whatever program running. And it's, we go to the Marvin Village website to see, oh, you know, they're running a, an art program for the kids. Um, you know, on Saturday mornings from 9:00, from November through December or whatever. And it, it really creates a sense of the community is, is really what I was thinking, but I understand what you mean.
Yeah.
So it's got a.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's a great idea and I absolutely think that we should continue talking about that cause I do love that idea of the community and having things, more things there for park. You know, and hopefully as we are able to annex, if some of these neighborhoods do want to come into Marvin and we will get some additional revenue from there, we'll be able to maybe hire somebody to do that. So I think we should not stop talking about it for sure. So, you know, I love that art idea and that's a great one. So any other types of ideas, like jot them down and let's keep talking about it for sure.
Cause I think it will help actually with the annexation process. Cause people who aren't in Marvin, who are in Union, um, incorporate, look, Marvin runs all these cool programs or programs or for whatever, and I'm like, wow, how come we're not in Marvin?
Yeah, no, I do, I, I like it.
One thing sort of connected to that, Sherri, and because of the pandemic, we're not doing it live right now, but Marvin was having their speaker series at the barn. So once a month, at least some of the months out of the year, we were having a speaker come in, come in to talk about various, you know, wildlife related things. I am also part of the Union County Master Barner's Group and I'm, and on the education committee. And I'm hoping that we are able to bring some of their work toward this side of the county as well. And the barn is an obvious place to do that sort of thing. It's not anything that's going to make money for the, for Marvin, but it brings them hopefully some interest to, you know, the area.
But how does that information go out? Like, I mean, I'll tell you, I, I felt very disconnected when I moved here. I mean, I knew we were a part of Marvin because I paid a tax to Marvin, but that's it. Like, I, I didn't even know the park was a Marvin park. Like, I feel like, how, how are we getting these people? Are we, you know, I know you can go on the Marvin website, but I didn't do that. Maybe we need to do old school, you know, snout now and send information out and tell people, go on Marvin's website, register with Village of Marvin, um, with your email.
Like a welcome packet?
Yeah, you know, because again, I, I didn't have any of that information. I only, you know, last, you know, year and a half was like, oh, okay, we're part of Marvin. Oh wow, they have a park and.
Wait, what else? Don't tell me about the park. That's a topic. This is a great topic that I think we should continue to discuss. It's just not on the agenda right now. So let's, let's, Austin, let's add that maybe to next month's agenda though. Cause I do think it's important to talk about, it's just not on the agenda right now. We gotta keep, keep it on the agenda.
Okay. Well, a- a- and, and I agree. I, I think, um, visibility to the, to the residents is, um, you know, something that I, I know we have worked on. And I think the, the staff has gotten a lot better with communication and stuff, which, which will allow them to, to take advantage of, um, you know, the park more. But, um, moving on to the next item is, uh, Tullamore Phase Two update. And, um, Derek, we've got you for that one as well.
Okay, you should have gotten some pictures. I just wanted to show you guys that it's pretty much 99% done. I think he's just got some final touches and some cleanups. But, um, you guys got the pictures of the trail, right?
Yeah.
That thing is beautiful. I, I hope you go out there soon and get a chance to walk it. It's really neat what he did with the railroad ties and raising it up and the series of bridges. Those bridges were not even actually in the quote. He just felt that it, that was going to be the best thing. He went ahead and did them for us. Originally it was just the railroad ties and some piping. So, yeah, it's just, it just looks really, really cool with it kind of winding through the, the trees there and, um, the periodic bridges with the railroad ties.
I'm ready, this morning, you look really good.
You, um, you did the whole thing? Phase one and two? Awesome.
I had a quick question generally, and maybe this is not the same section, but that section that is down closer to the swim place?
That's the Amber Meadows Trail?
Okay, I didn't, I wasn't sure what it's called since I'm new. Is there a way to get that so I could get ice cream if I run?
I think Kim and, I think Kim and Rohit just started having this discussion. If Rohit's still on, maybe he can comment if this.
Yeah, I can figure that out if you want. Okay, yeah, so, uh, you know how there's those townhomes on Ray Road? There is actually like a 21 acre kind of mostly unbuilt parcel behind those townhomes. And, um, I'm in, you know, touch with Pulte where, um, once they're done building those townhomes, we would, um, enter a conversation about them donating that parcel to us to make it like a boardwalk trail type park, not like really built it mostly as a button. But, um, I mean, it's also in our master plan that that, uh, that area could be used to connect the trails, both the Tullamore and Amber Meadows trails to each other and also to, um, the area, I mean, kind of in the map of where Andy Houston, um, and all this stuff could be.
Yeah, cause I can see it. I'm like, oh, I see it there, but I, it's like only 100 feet away, but I can't get there, so anyway.
Yes. Yeah, that's the, that's the eventual vision and Pulte seems warned to that because we weren't ever going to be able to do that. About to do anything else anyway.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, looks, looks great though, um, from what I see, so excited about that. Any further discussion on, uh, Tullamore Trail? All right, uh, item number three, unfinished business is an update on the roundabout plantings.
Yeah, I just want to let you know, we're probably two weeks out. We had a little bit of holdup with some wording in the contract. But he, our last conversation yesterday was that he should have it done within two weeks.
And we're, just to recap, we're still, was it around 12 grand for both or something like that?
I think with the watering added in, it was just over 13.
Okay.
Which still brought us in below budget, within the contingency money that council appointed. And he'll be doing, you know, both roundabouts, so keep your, continue to keep your fingers crossed, real exciting.
And, and when you say watering, that just means them watering once they plant a couple of times?
Yeah, yeah.
To get them established?
Water, water delivery, yeah, to, uh, to maintain establishment.
Okay, so that's to kind of get them going and then the intent is that, you know, normal rainfall and stuff after a certain period of time?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Derek, this might be a stupid question, but we will pay attention to how, to if it rains or not on those plants, right? They want water on top of a torrential rain.
Correct.
Okay, I just see a lot of people irrigating their lawns after, you know, we've had five inches of rain.
Yeah, this is not a, you know, a meter box that's going to go off every day. This is them physically coming out and tending to it and watering, watering them as needed.
And, and then as far as the construction of it, is there anything we're going to have to do with traffic abatement or, or anything like that? Or they feel pretty comfortable, they have enough room to get their work done there?
Yeah, he doesn't anticipate any lane closures needed.
Okay. Or police, you know, like director or anything like that?
Correct. So how does that?
All right. Next item on the agenda for unfinished business is number four, which is the tree lighting.
All right, so this is coming up really soon and, um, this is starting to worry me a little bit. Since last meeting, I, I have not heard anything from any of you guys about the tree lighting event. Typically in the past, this has been a PRG-run event. They, you, the board will dialogue with staff if you need something or, um, if we can help and, you know, fill in the pieces, but, you know, the PRG has really always kind of owned it and, and done a lot to help do it. I know John's often, you know, recruited all the music and dance performances. And so I just don't know where you guys are with anything, if, if you even, you know, have cared to do anything or wanted to. I, like I said, I, I thought I had talked about, you know, dialoguing with me, emailing, and I haven't heard anything. From my end, uh, the band said no, the band that I had.
Hey, Derek, what do you think the actuality that we're actually going to be able to have this thing is going to be?
Oh, did we just lose everybody?
No, we're good. No, we're still going. We're good. Can you hear me?
Hey, on that note, I think when there's low bandwidth, the webex just like cuts everyone's camera off.
Okay. Okay. I mean, are we going to be able to have this? If we weren't able to have National Night Out a month ago, are we going to be able to have a tree lighting?
I don't know that I can give you an expert answer. If you just want Derek's opinion, I would say no. I would say we're running a big risk of putting a lot of time and effort and money into something that either, you know, will get canceled or will be restricted by the governor's orders or people just won't show up to. I could be completely wrong. I really have no idea what, you know, what we're going to look like. But, I mean, I haven't seen anybody else holding events. If they are, they're modified. I mean, we went to an event in South Carolina last week. And, you know, South Carolina's been open, right? And we had timed, ticketed entries and mask restrictions. And it kind of felt like a ghost park, you know, being in a large-scale event. It just, there just weren't a lot of people there. And we had to wear our masks the whole time. And the people working had to have masks. And there was, you know, protocols for passing out candy. And so obviously, we can't have kids sitting on Santa's lap and taking pictures. I've got a coffee truck lined up, you know. We can have a staff and volunteer event if nothing else. You know, with coffee for $750 if we want to do that. But if it were me, if I'm, I'm just starting over in 2021. That's just me.
Now, if we're not going to hold the event itself, is staff still planning on putting up what decorations we normally have? And putting a tree up and things like that for the people that are going to the park?
Yeah, we would decorate the barn regardless.
Yeah, so I have reached out, as I mentioned, I would, to the choir programs. I have not heard back from them. But, you know, things are very disjointed there with any of the extracurricular activities at the school still. And they're, you know, still very locked down. I know the schools don't plan on, you know, possibly moving forward until after the Christmas break at this point, as far as UCPS seems to be concerned. But, you know, I think I'm more along the lines of what Derek is talking about here. Because I think even if something is allowable, even with all these constraints, it's still going to affect the turnout to a degree that we may not be getting the, you know, what we kind of put into from an investment standpoint.
We won't get the- I agree with you, Derek. And base that on how the number of children that came by our house this year was just a fraction of what we normally see. And I think your point, people being a little fearful of being in a crowd yet this year, I think we won't get the bag for our buck that we normally do. It's a great event, but we need attendance. And I think a lot of people will not come. I think a lot of people feel like, Derek, they're waiting for 2021, get this year behind us or something.
If people aren't visiting their families at Christmas, they're not going to come to the park.
I agree with you.
Is there a way to do something, I hesitate to use the V-word, virtually, but at least like video, the, you know, decorating the barn a little bit, or turning the lights on, and then just posting that somewhere? So it's at least something you can go look at and say, oh, the lights are on, kind of thing.
That's something we can manage. We could manage. We couldn't do that live. We don't have the bandwidth for that.
No, you don't need to do it live, though. That's the thing. It's not pointing live. I mean, that's a lot of trouble.
Could we not Facebook live? You're not going to get a high-quality video, probably. I don't understand all that.
Yeah, but even if we maybe take some videos of the staff as they're putting it together, you know?
And then just encourage people to go back when they can. I like Austin-
We've done-
Sorry, go ahead.
We've done a lot of videos. My husband has done with our phones, a lot of them. Some of them, we use them for the Heritage Festival. We've made them for Facebook, stuff like that. And the audio and the video quality is not bad at all, considering, you know, it's a phone. So just a little bit of that. I mean, maybe all we can do, but it's better than, you know, an email that says, the tree's on.
Well, I've always loved the idea of having the barn decorated in a way that's photo-friendly. I actually took my kids up there two, three years ago and, you know, used the backdrop. I brought in my own little rocking chair. And I had them in Christmas pajamas and, you know, surprised mom with Christmas pictures for the kids. You know, so that's an opportunity where we can still decorate the barn, do some videos, encourage people to come out and, you know, at their leisure, take, enjoy the decorated scenery and take pictures or whatever. Post them to the website, you know, kind of build some community buzz, post them to Facebook or whatever. We need more pictures for the website, anyway. Send them to Austin. So, yeah, that's an alternative, a great alternative. But I don't know if we need like an official motion or a vote, or do we need to take it to council? We lost Fiona, it looks like. Yeah, since she's not-
What would really be taking it to council? The cancellation of it or?
I would say you all make a motion to, if this is what you're going to do, make a motion to recommend cancellation in favor of alternatives such as- Virtual. Not live, but in favor of safer alternatives. And then we can just tell them what you guys specifically want.
Yeah, okay.
And then you each are required to adopt a section of the barn to come and decorate.
Well, and that makes sense. That makes sense. Is there, you know, a Saturday morning between now and then or something that you want to designate for us to kind of come out and help staff kind of do that?
Sure, I mean, if that's where y'all want to go, I'll say if you never happen to get here. Soccer ends this weekend, so it could be the, I think there's the fifth, you know?
The 5th of December?
Yeah. That gives you a week after Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
It'll be our Christmas party.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, in all truth, it could be the Christmas party. But do something official, John. Do you want to make the official vote or? I'd take a vote. Take a vote.
Let me just see that we have, because Dan's not there right now.
Even if Coram Dorat, you are still permitted to go with a vote.
Okay, great. So do I hear a motion on the table to cancel the formal Christmas tree lighting ceremony, but to replace it with a, essentially the staff preparing the barn and so forth as we normally would do for Christmas? And as part of putting that together, decorating and things like that, that we kind of document that so that we can share some photos and potentially videos on our website so that people know that while we're not doing the tree lighting ceremony, that there is the opportunity for them to come out to the park and enjoy the holiday season?
Since motions need to be in the minutes verbatim, let me recommend a little something shorter.
Sure.
Make a motion to cancel the annual tree lighting in favor of encouraging residents to visit the decorated barn at their leisure.
So moved.
Any further discussion?
You did a good job, you're awesome.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
You guys will let us know when you need help, seriously. I'm more than happy to help with decorations and the-
If you could do verbatim.
Yeah, maybe something, you know, like 10 till noon or 10 till 2, you know, or something like that. It's kind of warmer part of the day.
Yeah, I'll send out a kind of a block of times and kind of get a consensus. I think this is a great idea and a good decision. It keeps some momentum going. And what is it, safer alternative? It is, and you still have the spirit of the holidays here. People will get depressed when they can't do things on the holidays. This is a good alternative.
Hey, we're just making one today, guys.
All right, so that-
I did also call the school and twice, and nobody even called me back.
Yeah.
No, they're not even answering, right?
I was a little disappointed, at least. Yeah, I love my email. Like, at least you made an email and say, you know, got your message, sorry, but, you know.
I'm working with CMS right now, and it seems like every day is a different step. I mean, I think the rules change from minute to minute, so I get why they're not calling you back, you know?
I know, I just call and say, they can't give you an answer.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, that concludes unfinished business. Now we'll move to review of the action items from today.
Okay, I think I got most of them. You guys let me know if I missed something. So I will put board orientations on the council agenda. Let's see, along with park fees under the PRG update. Bob, you had something on the agenda next meeting about marsh? What was it? Did I miss here that?
That we would discuss marsh for the Pocket Park and doing anything over the Pocket Park.
And Christina? I can merge that in with Pocket Park proposals in?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so I'll do that.
Pocket Park proposal?
So that's some good alliteration there. So Rohit will send the plaid or image of the parcel to the board. You all will do site visits to the Pocket Park and start thinking of proposals and ideas. Rohit will look into lighting. Derek will get broken-down data on the parking fees for the next meeting. And I think that's it. Did I miss something?
Just, I think really kind of having the discussion with council, we moved forward with the ace place thing.
That's right.
Generally thought that was a good idea.
Ace place with council, okay. Derek, should I put, you're going to put that on the, you're going to prepare something for council, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll wait on you to get that for that agenda information. Okay, so I think that's it. You guys let me know if there's anything else?
Anything else from you guys, Dan, Christina, Sherry?
Do a board comment?
Sure. We'll open up board comments and Derek, go ahead.
You go ahead. I just want to kind of reiterate, feel free to call or email me at any time with any questions. Bob's good about that. Any of these topics, something that pops up on the agenda or just something that pops up in your mind, just call or text or email. Don't even have to wait till the PRG meeting. So I pretty much 24/7 have something electronic on, so.
So just so we are square where we are, somebody's going to send out a lot of things for Marvin Gardens. So I want to take right over and see what we got there.
Yeah, Rohit will send that out.
Okay. I can probably pull up the, it was a one sheet from Union Power Cooperative. I can see if I still have it. If you guys are interested, just email it over so you can see like a price breakdown and stuff for lighting. Only because I spent hours with engineers, I learned a lot of information. I'll see if I can find that, just to give a clue. I know if we use a private electrician, because we're so close to the roadway, they would have to be DOT-approved lighting because we're close to 16. So, you know, those are things that we have to consider, too.
Got it. Dan, anything from you? Christina?
Was that me?
Board comment?
I didn't hear what you said. No, I have nothing else. I thought this was a good conversation. We came up with some really good ideas today, so that's great. And Derek, we're going to take you up on your, I won't call you 24/7 then.
Bob? And I'm good as well. So do I hear a motion on the table to adjourn the Village of Marvin Parks Recreation and Greenway Board Meeting here on November 3rd at 10:29 a.m.?
Second, who needs a second?
Stop it.
There you go.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? All right, thank you very much, everyone.